That's the training that I have received.
Sure.
That's what I would think.
I hear some, I see some shaking heads.
Because I asked that question to Jerry.
Common sense wise, I would think that would be.
He said was also part of the presentation.
Richard, who pays for that painting?
The chamber does.
Okay.
That can be part of the discussion when we put.
Okay, we're ready?
Sure.
I'm going to call the meeting to order. It is August the 6th, 2018, zoning board of appeals. It is 7:00 PM. May we have a roll call, please?
Rebar?
Here.
McGaw?
Here.
Hayhal, she has excused. Kineman?
Here.
Alsack?
Here.
Campbell?
Here.
Hutchins.
So we have a request by Ms. Hayhal to be excused. Have we heard from Mr. Hutchins? Okay. I will make a motion to excuse Ms. Hayhal.
I'll second.
Thank you, Josephine. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Approval of minutes, May 7. 2018, having been. Oh, the flag. I've not done the flag. Alright, help me. We're going to do the pledge. We're going to do the pledge. Okay, alright, thank you. Ready? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, having been absent, May 7. Any additions or corrections to minutes? I can't offer any.
I have, I have one correction on page 2, near the bottom, where it talks about a two-inch caliber. That should be a two-inch caliper with a P, not a B.
I see it. Third bullet from the bottom.
Yes.
Thank you, Larry. Any other corrections to minutes? Okay, hearing none. How about a motion to approve?
I move we approve the minutes as of corrected.
Second, yeah.
Alright, moved and second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and approval of tonight's agenda?
There is a mistake on the number one case, as far as the street name goes.
Alright, talk to us.
It should be North, there should be Saginaw, 102 Saginaw Street.
Ah, not North, North Saginaw. Good catch. Thank you.
If I knew more about caliper and caliber, I probably would have talked about one too.
Thank you, Josephine. Okay, with that correction, how about a motion to approve the minutes? I mean, the agenda?
Agenda.
Agenda?
Motion to approve with the correction.
Alright, thank you, Richard.
Second.
Thank you, Larry. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, the chair would just like to make a quick comment welcoming Mr. Richard Kineman. I was not here for his first meeting, and I would love to welcome you to ZBA. At this time, we would open for public comment. If there's anybody here that would like to share remarks, not related to tonight's agenda. Okay, hearing none? General business. So the first order here is to open our public hearing. Richard, do you want to say something before I do that?
Yes. As the individual who actually submitted this request, on behalf of my employer, the Chamber of Commerce, I am going to recruise myself.
Okay, thank you, Richard. And so just let the record note that Mr. Kineman has very kindly understood the the challenge in having the applicant on the ZBA, and he has taken a seat in our audience. Okay? Okay, I'm going to propose a motion to open the public hearing.
I'll second.
Thank you, Josephine. Okay, so let's have a little review of our application. Do folks from the chamber, or perhaps row, is it Caitlin that's with us tonight?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
I can both just come up here and talk to you. Yeah, yeah.
And again, please remember to introduce yourself for the.
Richard Kineman, 433 North Saginaw Street, speaking as Director of the Chamber.
George Collis, 601 East Maple Street, President of the Chamber of Commerce.
So if you want to look in your packet of what was, what we presented, it'll look at this part here. There is a image that should look like this. The Chamber of Commerce, you know that we do not own our own location. We are in this building, and we have, we are celebrating 100 years. And as part of that, our board had discussion about being able to publish that, you know, publicly some. Do you want to talk about Rocky and his interest in having something on his building?
Yeah, Rocky Sito is the owner of the party store where we want to put this. And we'd had conversation with him, it actually started with Fay, the previous owner, about putting a mural on the side of the building. And one of the conversations was that we would put a picture of George Washington crossing the Delaware for the George Washington Club. Holly has the oldest still functioning George Washington Club in the country. And the Village of Holly being a historic community, we thought that was something to promote. And we'd had that conversation with them, and they were excited about having something on the side of the building. Well, when I became the President of the Chamber, it coincided with the 100th anniversary, and we immediately started talking about marketing the Chamber of Commerce, rebuilding the Chamber of Commerce. And one of the things we did was we created the door labels that are very similar to this drawing here, that the businesses are getting. They're about, what are they, three by three or four by four? And they're on the doors next to the handles, or on a window where you enter the business. And the whole idea was for labeling and marketing and letting people know that the Chamber of Commerce is in Holly and is operating. And that's when we came up with the idea of we could put that on the building right across the street from where the Holly Hotel is, because there was some talk about whether that would, that needed repainting and so forth. And with the mural that went on the back of the RHL building, he immediately got commissioned to put new life into that one. And that's when we felt that this Chamber of Commerce would be a good bookend, if you will, for the mural on the side of Bob Hoffman's building on this side. And then, I was just talking this evening, the owners of the party store are looking at putting George Washington crossing the Delaware on the back of their building as artwork on that, which would fit within the parameters of what's allowed and so forth. So that's how the idea came up. That's what we were looking at. It was designed to mark another, you know, monumentous piece of history for Holly.
Okay, thank you.
So with.
Oh, and if I can add, this one has a picture of the clock that I don't think they can knock over. With that, I'll sit down.
So with that, we agreed in our chamber board of directors to speak with Kevin Burdick, who is the artist who has done the other paintings in our community, and asked him to give us a rendering of something he would be open to put on, on the side of the party shop. The picture that you see there is what he has come up with for us. And, you know, it looks kind of cool personally. And part of what he wanted to do in presenting this, it's our logo with a little twist to it, because the clock is, is actually real. You know, it's not just silhouette of the clock like our stuff. And you know that his artwork, he does such a phenomenal job of that portion of what he does, that he, he, this is, this is the rendering that he came up with. When we, when I approached administration for the village and talked about this possibility, that then led to the paperwork that we have done in order to file to come, come here today. So that, the size then, we went with basing it on the spacing that is on the wall itself. This looks centered here. It's, the spot on the wall is actually a little off-center, where there's three lights that they have placed on that side of the building. And it would go between two of, the two left end lights, the center and the one to the left, towards the entrance to the party store.
So you had a method, if you will?
Yes.
In designing the size of this?
Right, yes. Yes. And that's, that's why, why it does exceed the 20% limit, because we are fitting it in, in an existing, you know, in a predetermined space. And so that does make a difference, you know, making it fit a little better. Also, when you compare that space to what's across the street with the hotel, the one for the hotel is extremely large, because it's, it's a much bigger wall. And so when you turn around, if you make this one too much smaller, then it looks out of balance a little bit from one side of the street to the other. And so we're, we're looking at that possibility, you know, how that kind of works to, to keep the symmetry of the street going, shall we say?
Okay, thank you.
Okay? I think that's kind of.
No, I make the motion, we're okay to sign.
Well, well, if we could, we'll, we'll get there in a moment. But I, I like your motion. Anybody else have any questions?
Yes, I think you mentioned that the, that's, the sign is opposite, is signed for the Holly Hotel, but it's really a sign for Holly, the home of the Holly Hotel.
Yes, yes.
And originally, Mr. Curtin, not Curtin, the guy who had that hardware store there.
Goodeth.
Goodeth, yes.
Started putting that sign on that building.
Right.
The only other comment I have is I don't even know why, and I'm sure someone can tell me, why we even have a restriction on the size of wall signs, when it does, there's no reason to have that restriction. We, we, it's just, to me, it's ridiculous. People own a building, they should be able to paint it any way they want. That's my opinion.
Okay, yeah. I don't know that I could tell you the rationale. Must have come out of planning? And.
Oh, one other thing.
Yes, sir.
These murals that are painted on various surfaces now, never came before the zoning board of appeals, apparently they are not signs. I don't know what the.
Correct. And that was some of the discussion I had with village administration, whether what we were doing was a mural, which does not require any approved, you know, any, doesn't meet any special requirements, or is it signage? And we felt that we were, we were better serving our community by being transparent and running it as a sign, so that we didn't just say, you know what, we're just slapping something else up on a wall.
Well, it's much like Mr. Goodeth's mural, if you will.
Sure.
Because it also doesn't advertise actual business.
Right.
In my estimation.
And I understand the reasoning that those did not have to, like, that one didn't have to come before anything. Again, because it was, it, well, it was a redo. It was, it was not a new sign. It was, it was repair, basically, so.
Okay, anybody else? Caitlin?
Yep, so I can go over my analysis that I provided for you in our letter, kind of briefly going over. I can speak to some of the questions on the interpretation of kind of where we are right now. So a lot of this discussion is off of that provision where the mural versus sign. And the issue is, is that we do not specifically have any regulations for murals. So therefore, the definition of what a mural is, is not specified. So the issue becomes, we do have a definition for a wall sign. And specifically, it talks about organizations, businesses, in that caliber, that these are entities that have wall signs. So that's where the issue comes in, is it specifically, those type uses are named as part of the definition for a wall sign. And it is advertising a specific organization. So due to it having that type of labeling on it, unlike some of the other murals, and we've talked about some of the murals that have been there a very long time, which are considered legal nonconformities, that would be the issue related to that. So coming before you today, they're asking for a variance to exceed the maximum sign area of 38 square feet. So you can see in that provision, it specifically says 20% of the wall, the building wall, or a maximum of 100 square feet. So because the 20% of the wall face is 90 square feet, that's why, that's where that extra 10 came from, is because of that. So if they were to per se, let's say, be on a two-story building, and we'll get into that, where it does play into the rationale behind allowing this, or this variance, they could potentially go ahead and do a 100-square-foot one, up to that amount. So they potentially, if they were on a different wall surface, could have an extra 10 feet. So as everyone is aware, it's in the Central Business District, it's located on the corner lots. And then going into the standards. So the first standard relates to practical difficulty. So the idea of their, the strict regulations that we're looking to abide by would potentially be overly burdensome. So in support, due to the closeness of the building, the larger wall would be easier to be seen by pedestrians, as well as those in motor vehicles. However, on the opposition side, you could potentially look at doing a smaller wall, or doing a smaller wall sign, because it is a wall, a smaller sign. This is something the applicant is choosing to have a larger one. And for standard two, it's talking about substantial justice, so looking at making sure that due process, that surrounding neighbors and all are being treated very similarly. So in support, many of the buildings, and especially that immediate CBD district, are two-story buildings. So they have potentially at least 10 more square feet of larger signs. So that's something unlike in some of the other surrounding buildings, as well as kind of trying to make sure that, taking in specifically that wall surface. And then you look in opposition, there are several other murals that appear to meet that standard for wall signs. Because we can't, because you, how it's defined, there is no difference between a wall sign that is painted or something that's separated, because it's mounted on the wall, either by paint, or by screws, or nails, or whatever. It's still considered a wall sign. So that's where we kind of, that's primarily one of the reasons we're coming to the ZBA for this discussion. In support, the applicant specifically noted that it is a promotion of their 100-year contribution to essentially the community. Talking about standard three, public safety and welfare. In support, doesn't appear this violation would cause any immediate issue with public safety or welfare. It's mounted on the sign, it's not necessarily going to contribute to that sign clutter, which we generally are concerned about with pole signs and other larger signs, because it is located on the wall. In opposition, though, because of it being a larger sign, it could potentially be an issue for public safety and welfare. Standard four is talking about extraordinary circumstances, so making sure this is not a self-created issue. In support, many of the other buildings, like I alluded to earlier, it's, they're multiple stories. So they have a larger wall area to accommodate a larger sign. And this is unfortunately not something that's a condition of this proposal. In opposition, they could propose to have a smaller wa, wall sign. Getting near the end, standard five, talking about safety hazard and nuisance. It doesn't appear this would cause any type of nuisance, beside the idea that somebody might find the sign clutter some type of nuisance, but that's up for the ZBA. And then lastly, relationship to adjacent land uses. This mural, as well as the neighboring ones, are all commercially intended in a commercial district. So having some type of mural seems to coincide with a lot of the immediate locations' current practices. In opposition, it's trying to make sure that all the signs that are following the rules are being consistent. So that 10 extra square feet that would otherwise be allowed on a building that's larger, if other buildings were to, let's say, move in and were to be rebuilt or something, to that notion where they were only one story, making sure everyone's treated the same way, because they are commercial. And that district is a little bit larger than just the immediate downtown. So trying to keep that in effect. So potentially, there's three different options in front of the ZBA tonight. One is a request for denial. Two, you could look at easily allowing a lesser variance, so allowing that 10 extra square feet to equal out the 100, which is the otherwise minimum. Or the ZBA could grant the full requested amount, which is that 38 square feet.
Okay, thank you, Caitlin. Any other questions or comments?
Mr. Collis, what do you think? Do you like that sign, that size?
Well, yeah, that's what I would.
That's what you picked? I'm just curious.
I have a question. The other murals that you're talking about that meet the requirements, how does anyone know that? Has anyone gone and measured those, those signs and the mural sizes? And has people, has someone actually done that?
Right, so it's based on guesstimation. So you're correct, I didn't just go out there with a ruler to get it all exact, but it looks.
This building's this big and this.
Right, so we just got a general idea, and a lot of it is to that where there, some of the other murals located in town, they're more of a mural. They're not a wall sign. And there are different wall signs.
And I'm pretty sure anyone's going to look at this and going to think of it as, I mean, I don't really think of it as an advertisement, really. I mean, it's celebrating 100 years. It's, sure, it's an advertisement, marketing type thing, but nine out of 10 people are going to look at it and go, it's just a mural. You know, it's just celebrating something else about Holly. You know, so I don't see where it's a wall sign, per se, you know, like a business sign. It's not, plus it's not a party store for the chamber. I mean, no one's, it's not a party store sign. It's not his sign, so.
Right, but it is an organization in Holly. So that's, that's where it kind of draws down.
Yeah, those kind of, we're thrilled to mention the words, right?
And that's something that we could always, and that's something that we are aware of, is the sign ordinance. We've talked about that in previous meeting, wanting to clean up, even looking at some of the different height restrictions, looking at lighting, looking at, we've even talked about administratively looking at, how do we want to actually move forward and address murals, so that they are different than wall signs? Because otherwise, we're kind of constrained to, it is advertising an organization, and it's specifically called out. So therefore, we can't necessarily easily sidestep without potentially going somewhere, we'd get in trouble.
And I did say somewhere in here where eventually it would be repainted, covered up, or removed, or whatever. Is there like a timeline for that?
The possibility, I think.
Please, please come to the microphone.
Yes, that's in the contractual agreement that we have made with the party store, so that we have a document in writing that has given the chamber permission to put something on somebody else's building. And it is, it is a perpetual agreement, unless either party decides to dis, you know, to, to no longer have that. And that the paintover is done by whichever party says we're done. So if the chamber says, no, I think we're done with this, then the chamber will pay to paint over it. If the party store says, I think this has been up here long enough, we want to do something else, then they would pay to have it painted over. And, sorry, and it, and in that, it's perpetuated to future owners or board members. So it transitions to whoever else may own the building, or whoever else may serve on the chamber board.
And I believe the building is already painted. Am I correct?
Yes, it's not plain brick.
It's not plain brick.
Right.
So if it was to be painted over, it would be?
Painted over.
Painted over. It's not, it's not.
Paint to match the rest of the wall, yes.
Yeah, I'm just thinking of the integrity of the brick. Putting on my historic hat.
Yes, yes, thank you.
Okay. Any other? Okay. I'm going to make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Thank you, Larry. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. So this is our opportunity to have further discussion. I have one question for staff. Did we notice neighbors? Yes? Did we receive any feedback? None. Okay, thank you. I thought we probably did, because we had a big list, but just wanted to get into the minutes. Uh huh, thank you, okay. Okay, so, um, excuse me?
They were really concerned, because they all showed up for the meeting.
Well, they could, they could have sent something in writing as well.
True.
Yes, yes, okay. So are you ready to go, Bob? Are you gonna, are you gonna walk us through those?
No, I make a motion to approve that sign.
Just a minute.
Yeah.
Larry, a second.
You threw me off right there.
I want to reiterate my position that building owners should be able to paint their building any way that they want. If they're going to attach a sign, that'd be a different thing in my estimation. But to paint a building, I think there should be no restriction on the building owner as to how he wants to paint his building, consistent with other laws that are in force, like historical commission, anything like that. The township, or the county, or the state, any of those laws should take precedence over anything that we have. And I think it would be a lot better if we reduced the restrictions on our property owners, so they could paint their buildings any way they wanted. That's, that's Larry McGaw's. Yeah.
He makes a good point.
Opinion.
Sure, thank you, Larry.
I hope that planners take that into consideration.
Okay. Okay, Bob, are you ready? If you want to review your motion, if you want to talk about it. Each of these six points.
Just the way it's rolled up. Just the way it's rolled up here, the sign.
All the staff finding.
Just the way they got it rolled up here.
Well, I think.
You have to say it out loud.
Yeah, we have to, we have to, we have to spread it out a little more, Bob. So Caitlin's offering to help you.
Alright, so in essentially.
You gotta speak in that microphone, young lady.
Yep, so essentially what you're going, what I would recommend for a motion for approval for the entire requested variance, would be I make a motion to approve the requested variance of 38 square feet to allow a wall sign located on 100, into North Saginaw Street, due to the facts of finding of standard one, found in compliance, standard two, found in compliance, primarily due to it not causing substantial justice, provided that it does not, and then standard three, does not at all harm the public safety or welfare of the community or immediate area, meets standard four, due to it not having extraordinary circumstances meets standard four due to it not having extraordinary circumstances to that immediate area. Standard five, does not appear to cause any safety hazards or nuisance to the building or immediate area. And standard six, found in compliance due to having a commercial inappropriate relationship to adjacent land uses.
That's it. You got it.
Okay, so as the, yeah. So, Bob, just to get it on the record here, as the maker of the motion, you are in support of the assistance that you've received from Caitlin in terms of the, the motion to approve based on the six standards?
That's it, yeah, I do.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, all right.
I will second your motion.
All right, thank you, Josephine. Is there any further discussion on the motion? May we have a roll call, please? Yes.
McGaw?
Yes.
Kinnaman?
Alsop?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Hutchins?
Okay, thank you. Motion carries. Thank you to the Chamber for bringing forth such a nice, nice signage. And good luck with your project. Okay.
George, put USC on that sign, right underneath the flag.
It's been a little since 1918, 1918 thing.
Any other comments from staff or board? George wants to make a remark? Caitlin wants to make a remark?
I just was going, I was going to thank the board for the approval on this. And to let you know, when this mural is done, one of our goals now will be, once we hit the 100-member mark for the Chamber, we're going to try to get one photo in front of that building with all of the businesses in town that are willing to come out and participate as members for that 100th anniversary. So, that'll be a historic photo.
A hundred, 100 years and 100 people. Nice. That's a great idea.
Very awesome.
Great.
That's a great idea. Yes, ma'am?
All right, so two things for the ZBA. So, I did take note and try to keep a running log of any issues that are related to the zoning ordinance as we kind of come about them. So, I did, it has, I will double-check it's on our list as far as murals and painted signs, making sure that when we go around to do a zoning ordinance update, if we deem it valuable enough,